Scary.
Yeah, it's scary alright.
Are you going?
I think so, let me make sure.
Oh, get me all spread out.
Is this new, everybody, every county?
What's that?
No.
No, it's just a...
Just the hot tech counties?
Just the hot tech counties, alright.
Other counties have had it, some don't.
We can see ourselves there. I'm just trying to see if I can see it.
Hello, everybody, every county?
Heather?
There you are.
It's the hour nine o'clock, so we'll call with me and go, order and have your own call.
Uh, Bobbit, absent Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
We will bow our heads for a quick prayer please. Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We come to you and ask you for your help as we go through our agenda to make the decisions uh that are best for all the all the residents in our great county of Grant. We ask that you be with each and every one of our employees as they go through the day and through the week. Please help them give a good day's work and go home safely to their families. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Cindy, will you lead us into the flag's loop please?
Yes, slute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting act.
Okay. Item five, consider an active on approval of minutes of March sixteenth, special meeting.
That's the first one we had.
Yes, and we'll just do five and six together, consider an act on approval of minutes for March nineteenth, regular meeting. And while we're doing that, you can go ahead and get your other meeting rolling.
Okay.
I'll make the most of your order.
Okay, and Lamb?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Braavander? And I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting act. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March fifth, two thousand and eighteen?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Jones and a second by Braavander to approve the regular minutes of the March fifth excise and equalization board. Do we have, let's see, all in favor, Lamb?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Braavander? Oh, I need to go get my book, so I need to call Mindy over here, Miss Alex. Hey no, can you come over, I need to get the transfer book and print out the minutes so they can sign. Alright, thank you, bye bye. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes um of March sixteenth and March nineteenth.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Hess to approve the minutes of the March sixteenth and March nineteenth, well, the March sixteenth special meeting and the March nineteenth regular meeting. Um and seconded by Ronk, all in favor, Ronk?
Yes.
Hess? And...
Yes.
Yeah, Bobbit, do you want to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good to me, motion carries. Okay, we're at comments from the public.
Yeah, you got, here just in time to hear the public.
Alright, let's hear from the public.
Do we have public?
I don't have any public.
Do you guys want to, have they opened their meeting?
Yes.
We're waiting on us.
We're at the same point.
Waiting on us.
While we're on uh comments from the public, we will have some new business that Cindy Pratt needs to bring before.
Alrighty, we're down to uh transfers, do we have any transfers? Mindy?
Yeah, I think so.
Transfer appropriation, I know we have monthly, but do we have any regular transfers?
Well, maybe we don't. Don't see any.
None?
We have appropriations. I'm not seeing any Cindy.
Okay, there were monthly appropriations for March.
Okay, so that's where you guys will be, I guess, whenever they come around.
So what are we, about ten seconds behind or?
It must be some sort of a delay.
This is why.
It's slow off.
Yeah, it is.
You laid your hand out there. See how long it takes.
See how long, there you go, we can time it.
Too cold this morning.
Yeah, there you go.
Shoot a little ether, somewhere and get it going. Well, I tell you what, yesterday, Easter sure felt like Christmas.
It did, didn't it?
Oh.
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, I didn't see any transfers.
There's none.
And I dug, and they're working on monthly appropriations.
Do you want us to post it really, or do you want everything to be? I don't mind.
You're fine.
Now, excise board needs to look at these, review these transfers.
Do what?
Get some nice refunds, we got some of your kind of things. That needs to do more signatures. Oh, gotcha.
Do you want this one?
Yes.
They might, you know, they may wait a full two weeks, and if they did, that would have been...
Cindy, you want to slip for this appropriation?
No, I think I'll keep my, I mean...
Yeah, I was all proud of my sixteen hundred for Pioneer, and then I saw that and...
And I gotta get one more check from them, so...
Talk them into two more.
Yeah. Well, just have it all in one big check.
Yeah, no kidding.
And the reason they're paper faked is we do have our new scanner, so she's gonna start scanning all this stuff in to Calgro, so...
So you're soliciting donations for paper books?
Yes, yes. Come to our office.
You have plenty?
Yeah, they're probably forty years old, they don't do the trick.
They'll work, huh?
How far back did that Pioneer deal go?
They paid it up to nineteen ninety-six, is where I think I read it, so anything prior to, then they paid it up to...
I've noticed it.
Yeah, so ninety, and so ninety-six was still forward, you know, they pay a little bit every year, but capital card is...
I mean, yeah, since it's a cooperative, but...
Yeah.
I was kinda...
I think that's...
I guess they gotta update it sometime, but I haven't been... Twenty years, or however long it takes? When was they paying that now?
Yeah, I don't know. I thought it was an odd time, maybe it was due earlier than they took care of it, I don't know. Yep. It's like a puzzle.
I don't know, you did a good job, Robbit.
She is.
You need to switch.
Yeah.
That is your new chair, the first of the month.
Yeah.
Robin, you're gonna have to put some air in your chair, you look way... Need a telephone booth.
It's my age, I'm shrinking.
No, it's gravity.
I move to approve monthly appropriations for March of twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the monthly appropriations for March of twenty eighteen, all in favor? Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes must be turned unanimously. Treasurer's allocation of alcohol, alcoholic beverage tax for March of twenty eighteen.
I just asked her when I was out, and she said she doesn't have it.
There was none, or just she didn't get it?
I said, is there any? She said, nope, that's what she said to me.
Okay. Uh treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriations.
Same thing.
Not done.
Didn't get it.
The treasurer's actually didn't get it done. Um assessors twenty seventeen five-year exemption manufacturing statement of amounts to reimburse, is that also on the executive? We'll wait for them to catch up. I got that.
Well, it's under ten. So it's not, it's not part of the, it's like it was an, you didn't have to...
I thought it was over five. Okay. Okay, well, I mean, as far as the paperwork, it's in order. Okay, I was just concerned about that, but...
These were the, these are transfer corrections. These you'll sign, this one, this is just a regular transfer made by the sheriff's office, and it was funds that were... Was it five hundred dollars a month that was going in, or whatever, or when we did the transfer, when we did the conversion, we didn't... On that six thousand that we did, let's see, funds should have been placed in capital at alley rather than maintenance and operation. This is a correcting entry. So you're just acknowledging that, someone just needs to initial, and then this was a correction between the... Thank you. The appropriations were placed in the wrong one, this is a correcting entry, original transfer was for four hundred forty-six, went to... What it is, is there's, these are twelve twenty-six, but the department's different, and it should have gone to thirty-five hundred, and it went to the sheriff instead of the...
Courthouse security money actually went into the service fee account.
And these are the supporting documents, so we had to transfer, so... Yeah, on the monthly, this had gone into um thirty-five hundred, and it should have gone into the oh-four hundred, and the four forty-six should have gone into this, so we're just, this one went into that account, and that one, so we're just switching them back.
Yeah, I went to pay some bills, and I'm like, where's all my money in my service fee, you know? So then I started digging paperwork out, and I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa. I got reversed.
So here Cindy, you just...
So you got the...
That one, yeah, on the backside by the amount.
Right here.
Yeah, that'll work.
All four of them?
Even the bottom one's fine, yeah, that's, like, that's good, 'cause that's the total. Thank you. Now, on those, those were done on a different, those are correcting, and that's the one where we, they were in the wrong account that we were talking about. So that one you do sign?
Yeah.
But these are?
Those were just, those are the receipts, just showing where that money originally gone, so this one will go with... And I just had copies to put them back there when the auditor was looking, saying, this is what happened. Do you want those in? Yes, thank you. If you're anything like me, you'll be... There's the man that can be signed as well. I'm sorry, what? But if you're anything like me, you'll be all separate. Oh, yeah. You are correct, sir.
Is that a motion that's present?
That was a compliment.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the excise board to approve the correcting entries on the transfer of appropriations?
I'm making a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Lamb?
Is that new equipment?
Jones?
Aye.
And do we have a motion to approve the monthly appropriations?
That's weird.
Didn't, it can't be...
No.
All in favor, Lamb? Jones?
Aye.
And item C, there are no treasurer's allocation of alcoholic beverage tax for March was presented. And on the treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriation for March, not presented. Okay, we're down to, I believe, the same item now. Assessors twenty seventeen five-year exemption manufacturing statement of amount to reimburse.
The total amount is gonna be, we have five wind farms, still on the five-year exemption. Chisenview's on its last year, its fifth year, so they'll go off next year, but the total that the state should reimburse, Grant County, is three million eight hundred and three thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars.
Three million eight hundred what?
Eight hundred and three thousand, two eighty-six.
Two eighty-six, thank you.
Mm-hmm, and that's for one year?
Yes, all of them totaled together.
How far behind are they on the reimbursement?
Oh, usually, I think Penny said she usually doesn't get um paid until like June or July.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that's right.
And that could just be a partial payment as well, it's hard telling with the budget, how...
Yeah, we need to request the cashier's check.
And so that'll be for one of the commissioners to sign.
Is that a discounted rate? If they were to go back on the roll, say, the next year, is it...
I think it's gonna be higher when they...
It will be higher.
'Cause we have Rockfall for sure that's going on, and Jerry's gonna be that, oil and gas guy, or that.
So that number could go up?
Could go up, yeah.
That's, that's good.
Or decide we're getting too much, it could go down.
Well, like on the Chisenview, once it's assessed, it's assessed, and then the company's gonna have to pay that.
Right.
Is that, and that right?
So this is the only place, this is the only place you put the dollar figure, you don't carry it over here? Doesn't go over here either?
It hasn't in years past.
Alrighty, we need a motion to um um approve the five-year exemption manufacturing statements.
I shall move, I'll second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to approve the five-year exemption manufacturing statement for three million eight hundred and three thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars to be reimbursed by the state of Oklahoma for the wind farms, all in favor? Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess? So, I'm on, um, that's the only place we don't sign it up here. No, we don't have to do the claim, there's not a claim, it looks a lot like that other form, but it's not the same, is it? Okay, I think that's right.
Is that right, it's just that one signature?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and the excise board just acknowledges this thing.
You all wanna look at that?
Okay, now we need to, item F, acknowledge the corrections included in the twenty eighteen appropriations from treasurer's office, the electronic deposit placed in the sheriff's service fee, twelve twenty-six should have originally been deposited to DRCRC, twelve twenty-two for two hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, and moving on, I'm not... But I still wanted to acknowledge that, okay. I spoke, Scott came in and said Hess, he goes, my appropriation should have been six thousand, six twenty-four. Okay, so then he says, but a two ninety-seven came electronically, and originally this should have been in the sheriff's service fee, but it should have gone into DCR. Okay, well, I get it that it wasn't appropriated yet, but we had already kept the miscellaneous receipts in our office, so this is what we, was what this was, this and this, but to me, it needs to be acknowledged by the board, because it was in from one fund, and it had to go to another fund, so if you all wanna look that over, you can.
That sounds good.
And this was for the year?
Yeah, right, because it did, it was...
What she did was she just added it into the monthly appropriation, but to me, it should have been separated out of this, and had the correction.
It should have, we're, it didn't get separated out of the correction.
Because she added it into his monthly appropriation.
No.
The two ninety-seven should have gone on, six, six four should have gone on as his monthly appropriation.
Um, they've got Patty Heath and Brian and...
The ex commission did it.
Yeah. Just document that, that we can't get it correct.
Yeah, they specialize in the wind farms, the five-year exemption part of it.
Let the minutes reflect it, that should have gone in a separate one to be able to track. Okay.
Not correctly...
Because they said it's a five-year exemption, but yet they pay...
Mistake paid, maybe they don't pay it.
They sent to the company.
But the company...
Yeah.
And after five years? Same rate, or is it different?
It's on their agenda, just to, for acknowledgement.
Max is okay.
Well, I've been westerning a month, three years ago.
Review purchase orders.
Second.
There's collecting much from gas, companies. And they figured out that schools were doing really well, they couldn't get too much money, so they changed the rules. So is that gonna happen here?
Okay, do you all want to just acknowledge, do that, they didn't say they have to sign on the excise? I mean, on the five-year exemption, they need to at least acknowledge that they reviewed it?
The, um, the reimbursement?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be...
So, so acknowledged by the excise?
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
Okay, this is just acknowledging, um, and I'm trying to get all this straight in my head too, but there was, if you look back on... When this was originally put into, on the treasurer's side, it was put into twelve twenty-six. which is sheriff's service fee, and it should've gone into twelve twenty-two. So they corrected it, but what happens is, they bring these miscellaneous receipts over to the clerk's office, well, we go ahead and input them, so it was in our system wrong, but what happened and then was cor- I guess was corrected. Anyway, it ended up being put in as just part of their monthly transfer of appropriations rather than split out. So I'm just wanting to acknowledge that this correction has been made because it went from one fund to the other fund. And it really should've been placed on one of those correction, in my opinion, it should've been on one of those correction forms. So I'm just asking for acknowledgement of.
Department of Corrections do not send a check to my office, the money that they owe us for housing, they owe the money that's gotta be charged twenty hundred cents down at the P O C. They do an electronic. Electronic deposit with the treasurer, and so that's why they're going to, it's separate, but I don't actually.
Doesn't, doesn't show up.
So you just want a paper trail?
I'm just trying to create a paper trail, yes, yeah. I'm, I'm a paper trail person.
Well, that's good.
I've had to do mu- to do too much research in my lifetime, that, you, you appreciate having a paper trail if you're the one doing the research.
I can find it.
Yeah.
If you're like me, if you sleep on it, why?
Yeah, just mother, throw that piece of paper away when you, what if you get it?
Oh, I remember that. No, I won't.
You can set that stuff on mine if you want to.
That's what we have on the excise board, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, we don't, we, we gotta do this.
Do the what?
Yeah, do.
Oh, the five-year thingy?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I thought that's what, that's what I asked you when you said, they don't have to sign.
The five-year exemption application.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, go for it.
Okay. Okay, I have three new applications, one is for Grant Plains Wind. I don't, this'll be year two, I believe, on the. Grant Wind L O C and Chisenview Project Wind Two.
So these are the new ones that are gonna, they're gonna try to put in place?
Yes, these are the new five years that, I believe they're all on their second year now.
These are existing projects.
Yeah, he's expired, but then they have a second branch that's on, this'll be year two in two thousand eighteen, then these two are year two. So chairman of the board, a two rate.
For a while.
Right there, on all three of these.
I guess do we need, we have a motion to approve them before they start signing really?
Oh.
I shall move.
Okay. We have a motion from Jones, seconded by Rob Vander, to approve the five-year exemptions for Grant Plains Winds, Grant Wind, Chisenview Winds, project number two. All in favor, Lamb?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then Cindy, there's a spot for you to sign.
Okay. And will you make me copies or?
Sure.
Oh, I'll need to put my seal on it, probably.
Oh, gosh, I don't remember, if that, yeah, that probably wouldn't.
Okay, can I just take them and then I'll sign them and I'll scan them and then I'll bring them back to you?
Yeah.
I promise, I promise, they're, they're going right here.
Okay.
Okay, so now we've acknowledged, so now we can adjourn, I believe? Sorry about that, I didn't mean. Do we have a motion to adjourn on the excise equalization board?
Second.
Uh, Rob Vander moved, Lamb seconded to adjourn at nine thirty-three, all in favor, Lamb?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you.
And I'll get that to you after the board meeting.
Alrighty, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Yeah, you all too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You didn't even wear it.
It's April, shouldn't have to.
That's right.
Twenty-four degrees. I'm gonna get my coat.
Hi, Des.
Hi there.
Can I see the appropriation page for a minute, the ones that we're putting in today or early?
Oh, yes, I have them here.
Is that, it's supposed to be, and they walked out the door, gotta catch you quick.
As I say, if you have one that needs to go in, yeah, sorry, thank you.
Well, it might've been, I put it wrong on my system, I, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Who you looking, which one?
District three. I said that, uh, C B R I. Yes, sorry, that's not yours, it's Cindy's.
I thought I kept my big mouth shut.
Yeah, but when I proved it, it wouldn't have worked, so let me change this real quick.
Congratulations.
Thank you, that was one of my wind farm stuff, that, yeah.
Oh, hey, you need some more, don't you?
How come what we're paying here doesn't match what the invoice is?
Well, it should, it's.
It's.
Yeah, it should, let's have them number twenty.
Oh, you're right.
Is that on?
On the treasurer's office. Her furniture.
Well, just FYI too, apparently, the treasurer's office had been giving Alex some report on the appropriations breakdown, but apparently they don't do that anymore starting this month. Which is fine, we need to calculate it anyway, but it's kinda odd it quit happening this month.
Yeah, this needs to, uh.
Well, send, well, we're gonna prove it today, send it back.
I signed it, Pat signed it.
I can put a sticky note on it.
Mark them out, or whatever, we can come back in, it needs to be, it's not gonna be paid, it's not.
Yeah, let me.
We can re, we can reprint it or.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna need to reprint it, we want to.
Reflect what it was, yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve purchase orders in travel claims.
I'll second that.
Um, Hess moved, Ron seconded to approve the payment of purchase orders in travel claims, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Blankets, I have a motion.
I move to approve blankets.
Second.
Hess, uh, Ron moved, Hess seconded to approve, uh, blankets as presented, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, and resolution twenty eighteen twenty-five, through commercial traffic prohibited signs for State Highway one thirty-two and Latimer Road.
Okay, and did you assign that a resolution number?
Yes.
Very good.
Number two oh one eight two five.
And that will need to be pu- published in the paper, does it just, does it, does it matter, Max, is it just one time?
I think just one, one time, and we have to, uh, notify.
They'll do all the.
Yeah, yeah.
And you'll take care of that part, I'll make sure it gets published, I'll.
Okay.
If, I mean, this resolution, right, just needs to be published?
Yes, we need to, uh, publish that, uh, resolution, and I need to give them that number so we can get the signs made, and then after the signs are made, I have to notify the.
The.
Uh, trooper S.
S.
When you send.
The sheriff's office too, that, uh, we signed that road.
Okay.
Okay.
When you send that to Rosie, have her put it in our resolutions, but would you also tell her to put that on the front page? So people will see that without having to look for it, uh, leave it there.
For.
Yeah, she leaves it just, you know, she just puts new stuff on top of it, just to have her put that in full on that front page.
So is that a resol- is that a motion that you made, Max?
Yes, I'm, I make that motion to approve.
I second that.
Hess moved, Ron seconded to pass, uh, to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five, through commercial traffic prohibited sign for State Highway one thirty-two and Latimer Road, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, Des, would you mind taking these to Alex?
Nope, one of you will like me, one of you won't.
Oh, we like.
That sure is sad.
Okay, uh, the Bandit chipper purchase through N J P A Cooperative funding reimbursement from the state waste manager grant through ACO. Um, I don't have anything on that, who had me put that on? I did, that's me, um.
So you're gonna get a discount?
I just wanna acknowledge that, uh, I'm going to buy it, I'm going to buy that Bandit chipper through the N J P A Cooperative agreement, um, and it will be reimbursed, it, uh, through the state waste management grant through ACO. I wanted to do that, acknowledge it, now we will, I thought I sent you the paperwork.
Oh, I'm.
There's a paper for me to sign, but if we, I can sign it, I probably, I probably didn't.
I say, I don't, now, I know, and Des, he said she.
Ca- I'm sorry, I, I think, I thought we sent it to you, but let me see if I can.
I say, if not, we can.
But we got, we can approve it, we can approve it.
Approve it and then I'll get.
I think we approved that, the thirty thousand dollars through our.
Yes.
Board.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, right, yes, we've done that, I just want to acknowledge, I'm getting it through this.
And you're not buying off state bid or anything?
They are a competitive bid, but through then.
It's gonna be a lower price.
It's a lower price, right, I've got it lower, twelve percent, I just want to acknowledge that.
Sure. Okay, is it more than the thirty thousand?
No, it isn't, it's, it's right, it's twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-two or something.
What I'm saying is, is we've already approved the thirty thousand dollars, uh, is that gonna be kosher through the state?
They will only reimburse the twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-two, whatever, whatever, whatever the invoice is.
It's good that you're saving the money.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's like a hundred and sixty dollars less than the thirty thousand.
Than the thirty thousand.
Yeah, and, uh, let me see if I, 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 I should have.
I think it's a program we really, really need to start looking at, cause I think there's some major cost savings out there.
Yeah, I have a time to look at it.
I know Des, he said on, um, uh, syntax or whatever, it's gonna be like forty percent savings. She was checking.
Syntax.
The uniform people, or is it not, uniforms, maybe it's uniforms, or something like that, yeah, so.
I sent it to you, oh, nope, I didn't send you, I just said put it on there, I didn't send you the document. It's twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Was that good enough if you, you guys got that in a minute?
Yeah, the, if we would put that.
And tell me again, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents, um, yeah, he's supposed to send me an R B O and, and who the P O, I don't, yeah, but that's, it is a, a, a model twelve X P C chipper.
Twelve X P chipper?
Yes.
And the brand is Bandit?
Bandit, yes, I would move to accept the, the bid through N J P A Cooperative.
Sure, I'll second.
Bobby moved, Ron seconded to approve the purchase of the Bandit chipper through the N J P A Cooperative, which will then later be ref- for twenty-nine thousand.
Five seventy-eight.
Fifty-eight eighty, and well, once it's paid for and received, then I turn it into the state and they will reimburse that, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, county resolution, uh, discussion on county resolution liquor by the drink, did Stephen have an opportunity?
I, I did send that to him, and then I also cau- I did some research online, and then I called up to the court clerk's office and I spoke with Adrian and Jean, they were kinda in on the conversation together, and they said that, um, after October, then they will need to get their liquor license and beer licenses through the state, they won't be coming, is that correct?
Able commission will not.
The able commission.
Will then govern all license. Okay, that letter that, uh, that John had last week stated that he got it from the able commission. And their question was brought forward is, is do they have to buy, uh.
Both.
Liquor license, you're gonna have to buy both?
No, I think they'd just buy one, but it'd be through the, this able commission instead of buying it up here.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we'll get any, I don't know if we'll get any money off that or not, but.
Well, that was one question, but you know, the question.
I would doubt it.
That not?
I would doubt it, yeah.
So we don't have any language to, we have to have that approved by the thirteenth, we have to get it on the ballot, so today is.
Well, we talked like next week.
Second, yeah, so we've gotta have it the ninth.
You better remind him.
So.
I will, I'll, I'll personally go up and remind him.
So what Robin was talking about earlier, the election board, she was in here a- asking questions about it that she didn't think that they had to vote on anything, but.
Yes, that has to go to the vote of people.
Yes.
Yeah, that has to go to the vote of the people, we don't, we, we, we can, we as a board vote or not vote, approve or disprove whether we want to even put it on the ballot, but it goes to the elect.
And that's what we were talking, that's the reason we got Stephen involved last week.
To get us, yeah.
And are you all referring to the sell on Sunday?
Yes, 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 we need to add that on there.
Yeah, so they could sell liquor on Sunday.
Sundays, is it, is it just on Sundays or is it holidays as well?
Holidays too.
Yeah.
The ones that stay.
Well, we gotta decide what we wanna add, we withheld, last time we withheld Christmas, Fourth of July, what other one, we held, we had four holidays.
There was four holidays on there.
Wait a minute, do we have that still, I think I took that with me, yeah.
Well, we might've put it in the drawer back here.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I have it, I, I have it where I sent it to him, I can pull it up.
Election day?
Hmm.
Maybe election days were on there, I'll just remember.
I couldn't read the ballot, I was just trying to do it on my iPad and I couldn't read it.
Well, I guess we have nothing to vote on anyway, but we need to decide what we're gonna.
Well, yeah, it gives us a week to think about that.
Yeah, tell him to, tell him to make up the ballot, to include Sundays and leave out those holidays for now, just like.
Here it is, do y'all wanna look at it?
Yeah, there it is, uh, shall the sale of alcohol beverages by the individual drink for on-premise consumption be permitted within Grant County, Oklahoma between the hours of ten A M and twelve A M, and we'll need to check that time.
Okay.
And from Monday through Saturday, except for Sunday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day, so.
On premise?
On premise, okay, see, that will need to be changed too.
That needs to be changed too because of.
Yeah, because it's gonna be cash and carry.
You're gonna, you're gonna take the convenience store out of the.
Right, exactly, yeah, so, cause it's only gonna be High Point Beer. Yeah, so he's gonna have to figure out the language, and we have to have it.
Okay.
We have to have it.
Yeah.
There's another thing we have to have next Monday, we have to have the, uh, contract for the, the school.
Yeah.
And for the, we have to have that contract for the school.
And the Farm Bureau, or I mean, Farmer's Grain.
Farmer's Grain.
Yeah.
And if we need to, we can have a special meeting, if he could get that, that, I'll, I'll be going, I'm leaving Wednesday, but, I mean, that's got to be done.
Okay.
When's our payroll meeting, Thursday?
Yeah, I'll be here.
The fifth.
Yeah, you can put that.
You put it on, you put it on Thursday if you want.
Yeah, have him, ask him if he kept that contract, the school has to have a contract, and I mean, if. Yeah, have him, ask him if he kept that contract. The school has to have a contract, and I mean, if they're not.
For their insurance purposes and stuff, yeah.
I mean, they're, they're on go for that promptly, and you don't just say, at the last thing, oh, by the way, you can't miss a building.
And we can get into that on essence.
Yeah, that's right. You're right. Okay, okay. Um, so tell him, we, if we could do this Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, phone quack, fax for, uh, the Grant County Expo Center, two stoves for kitchen. Did you receive any phone faxes?
I do. I have, um, which. I, just FYI, I had, this was prior to Stephen saying or whatever, but I had visited with Cheryl Wilson. And I had said, I have a question, which, or here, you guys, this is a copy of my email, 'cause she didn't feel like it needed to go out to bid.
Oh, gee.
Well, it's just like the treasurer's.
It's something that's easily removable.
Yeah, right.
And it was just like the treasurer's, uh, office furniture.
Yeah, and so, anyway, I went ahead and did it. I mean, and it's eighteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total of two.
We're recovered. Just put, put this email with it.
Okay, and so, uh, the, uh, suggestion from the fair board, recommendation from the fair board is Lowe's, which was the lowest and best bid of nine forty-four per stove. We had a bid also from Sears, and it was nine forty-four, but they chose.
Lowe's.
Lowe's. And then there's a bid from JCPenney's in Enid, and it's a thousand forty-nine, and they are the exact same model on each bid.
Well, I move we approve the Lowe's then.
Let's check it that much.
Okay, we, yeah, uh, Ron moved, pass seconded to accept the, the phone quote bid, uh, oh, four seven eighteen for two stoves from Lowe's at nine forty-four each.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, delivered and set up.
They're just, they're a push and plug and. I mean, they're ta- they're.
They're, yeah.
Taking care of all, yeah.
I don't know if that's set up or.
Yeah, it's delivered and.
It doesn't say anything.
It should, um, should be delivered. Free delivery. Estimated delivery would be here. Free delivery. Okay.
It doesn't say anything about setup though.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, well, let's just put it in a minute as delivered.
Delivered.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh, Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, burn ban for Grant County Resolution twenty eighteen fifteen C.
Hi, do you have any burn ban information? We're at that point. Okay, we're ready for you. Thank you, bye.
I don't know what's happened here, but we've still got the excise board in here.
What's going on here? And maybe I'm not watching it live, I don't know.
Uh, maybe, it may be going on live and it just paused.
Oh, it is? Let's see.
Thank you. I'll pass this down.
Oh, yeah, now they're gone.
Yeah, 'cause there comes Desi.
We're just making sure we're still streaming.
Thanks, Brandon.
Just close on the live right here.
There we go.
It's a little bit delayed because it takes some.
Okay.
Yeah, you just know it's coming to a room.
How can you be talking? You just now entered the room.
Okay, so we have rain in the chance in the forecast. Patchy drizzle.
Freezing drizzle, pasture drizzle.
But lots, it doesn't look like a happy end.
Yeah, that's all we're getting is what it shows today, pretty much, what we've already gotten. Which was nothing.
I think we saw the water standing in the terraces, uh, you know, it's been raining, just the rain, there's water standing on the terraces. We looked pretty, pretty bad.
Kind of reminds them to head to a lot of fires last week.
I know.
No.
Yeah, it'd be too, it's too, it's too wet, too wet to burn too much.
Can you tell Scott Falconburg we're about ready for him?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So I guess we'll leave the burn band off for another week.
Yeah, I think so.
We want it on our agenda for next week.
Keep it, keep it kinda on there for.
For a little while.
We can put that in that drawer, you know. This one now, we got a draw on burn bands, so we just gotta, just keep them where we're at. Okay, no action on that. Uh, Scott Falconburg is on his way over.
Yeah, I, I think now if we just get a little heat, there'd be some stuff greening up.
Let's go on down to item P. Would that be all right here? Since Scott isn't here. Scott Falconburg isn't here.
Okay. Yeah, we have a motion to.
Hi, we're about ready, we're ready for your report to the board.
Just a second, let's see what we have.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay.
What'd he say?
He'll be here.
Okay, well then, let's just wait on him. We don't have to skip around. We'd really like starting right anyway. Yeah. Give me time to drink my coffee. I seen one of your deputies pickups up to Manchester yesterday, Scott. Looks like he's heading to Waukeeta.
Yeah, they're up there pretty frequently. I called, uh, got hold of the deputy on Thursday evening to go check out a suspicious vehicle up just outside of Manchester.
Oh, yeah.
And he had to actually turn around, 'cause he had just left Manchester and been up there on his own, so.
I went by there this weekend. They got the pickup that burned up, haul off, that's a jawline up there.
Finally.
Yeah.
Here he is.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
How are we all today?
Good.
Good. You?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
You are in the hot seat.
We are on the storm shelter issues.
On the storm shelters, there's just some of the, um, like concrete that they used to try to fix it and stuff, or some of it was knocked out. It's fallen back out again, so I don't know what you wanna do there. Uh, even when they tried to, it's two pieces, and they tried to seam it, that stuff's falling out too. Every time I go out there and sweep, I'm always sweeping up some of it and stuff, so it's like, just that stuff is falling out.
Are you just talking about little chips?
Well, there is a big piece by the door that fell out and stuff.
Like how heavy, when you picked?
Oh, it's just light. They're just thin pieces, but they're just breaking off, so I don't know.
Why don't we clean all that out? And why don't we get a silicone that adheres, uh, adheres to cement? And, you know, like that, you know, silicone stuff that you put around, why don't we seal it with something like that instead of cement? I think that might seal it up better. And they've got that that adheres, you know, will make contact with cement. Chunk all, maybe clean all that out, knock it out with a lot of something, chisel or something and clean it. And then, and we can bring up, we, we can bring our air hose up on our pickup when you're ready, and we can blow it all out real good. Cl- get it cleaned out real good before you put that on there.
Okay. Yeah, I ju- I just wanna make you aware of it, that, that, that that's what I was doing out there. Seems like every time I go out there and sweep, where them two come together, I'm always finding little pieces and then, a big. It's just a thin piece, I mean, it just, you can just poke it with your finger and it just, it just falls right out.
Well, do you think that an air hose might just blow it out then? If you wanna try, we could bring an air hose up and try to just blow it off. We could try that, and then, then, why don't we, why don't, um, we, someday, when you've got some time and get with Robert and figure out our schedule, and we could come up here and try to blow that out.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine. And I just wanna seal it a little bit better where it's not, that stuff's not falling out all over the place all the time.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we, why don't we try that and see, um, you might look and see, you know, be looking at the caulking and see what kinda caulking is out there and what we can do.
I think, uh, Lowe's, they got some concrete caulking or whatever that you can kinda squirt in it, or we can just go with some basic. Uh, heavy-duty silicone.
Yeah, so, that'd work as long as it's, adheres, I know they've got it, but adheres to the.
'Cause it, it's on the outside and the inside. Not so bad on the outside since we already painted it and we painted over that. But when that stuff breaks out, if there's any gaps, that's where other things can get through. I mean, they can get through, through the doorway, because there's a two-inch gap at the bottom of the door that allows air to get in there, and the vents allow them, but. I try to keep them sprayed as much as possible with. Yeah, I try to keep them sprayed as much as possible with tempo and stuff to try to keep the bugs and the spiders and stuff out of them. Uh, and stuff. I usually try to sweep them out at least once a month. If I can, in the summertime, I try to sweep them out more, 'cause they tend to get a lot of crickets in them. From the light.
Well, let, let's try that and see what we've got. We'll bring our pickup and air hose up and try to blow that out, see if we can do that.
It'll be fine.
And, uh, monthly maintenance report?
Monthly maintenance report is going okay. Uh, I'm trying to get, uh, some weeds out of the flower beds and stuff, uh, and get them in shape. Um, we had, uh, Locksalon Service come over and spray for the weeds in the yard. Um, basically, that's just about it. Just trying to get everything all caught up and cleaned up, and so it starts looking real nice. And as soon as they can stay warmer weather, uh, a little bit longer, I'm gonna go around here and trim the, the evergreens and the, and the bushes and stuff like that, and get them all cleaned up and everything else on those too. And just with the cold and stuff, I don't wanna cut them and then the cold get into them and, and turn them all brown.
Yeah, talking freeze warnings.
Yeah, you know, probably here in the next month, there'll be people up here starting on our renovation.
Well, I wanna do that, uh, try to get that done before then, so that I can get them backed away from the building on the by-side, so that they can at least walk back behind them and stuff if they can, if they need to, without getting poked in the face or something like that. And stuff, I'm trying to get the gaps back there, so that they can kinda get back there with a little bit better ease. And if they have to, get a ladder back there or something. So, other than that, everything else is, uh, going along pretty well.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Have a good day.
You too.
Um, item P, addendum, uh, oh, oh, one, twenty eighteen sheriff's office windows. Um. Change part of being bid. Have, I thought we've already bid, or, or they're, they're going out, have they gone out for bids for windows yet?
Well, remember, they didn't get any bids on the windows.
No, they were going out.
Apparently not. That's what Jim had told me, with that they had not gone out to bid yet. And so, what, how this came about was I'd received a, uh, email from Jim Hamlin about the sheriff's, uh, the type of window replacement or door replacement on the, or I guess, do you want to let Sheriff Sterling? Anyway, so this is what I came up with and then took it to the beginning, so.
And I'll show you the window time. Spoke with Mr. Hamlin about, um, the front door, obviously. Those two side glasses, that window and that small window, and then that small window there. So I talked with him about whenever they replace those particular windows and that glass, if they could use like at least a laminate type glass, which would be similar to the laminate that they're looking at for upstairs. That way, you know, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be bulletproof on a small caliber, it would at least be somewhat resistant. And then obviously, nobody would they be able to punch their way through that or throw something through that, because that laminate's designed not to shatter out, but just spider and stay in place. Just because I've got dispatchers behind those particular windows twenty-four hours a day, it was just a little, just a little added layer of protection for them.
I just have two copies of the same.
And this window here can actually, does not need to be replaced. See that wood? That's not even a window inside our office anymore. It's, it's a wall, whenever we did that back in two thousand thirteen. So honestly, if they just wanna delay a small patch of brick in that.
Well, uh, we don't need to, we, we just keep changing things, Scott, and it adds more to our contract. So I think we leave the window in, because who knows, in twenty years, when you read through the inside, you may wanna window back. So aesthetically looking at it, it's balanced. So I think a window goes back in, but.
That's fine, but, uh, and the, so that was the, that's what Jim Hamlin and I spoke about on those, on that area. Just for the glass on that area. And then I have received conflicting reports. I wanna double check if I can, or if I need to make an addition to items for next week. Or for new business. I can wait for new businesses. The.
Okay, wait for new businesses, okay. All right.
You were putting some money in the budget for those, like a security glass, and you could just take that out of our budget and add it to this renovation fund or whatever you need to do, and not worry about that anymore. 'Cause those were the same windows that I was gonna look at using that money for.
So the bid has not been sent out yet?
Not according to Jim. Jim Hamlin.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the addendum with the notation that it's going out to bid, and that the sheriff has said that we can move the money out of his budgeted account over to this renovation account to cover that. Is that correct? Okay.
I'll second.
Pass, move, Ron seconded to, um, approve addendum oh, oh, one, twenty eighteen sheriff's office windows for the two front glass windows on the door and three side windows, is that current?
Yes.
The three side windows with the money coming out of his budgeted account to help pay for that, and it will be put in the same bid packet as for the other windows. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just did two copies, just one, yeah, one for them, one for us, so.
Item Q, P card user Paul Matthews, um, and by the way, Matthew just for, is running T.
Oh, and do.
It's correct on that.
Oh, okay, I have it wrong on the agenda, don't I?
For District Two, I would like to, uh, add Paul with a, a card for an amount of five thousand dollars. I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Bobbit moved, Ron seconded to approve Paul Matthews to have a P card for District Two with a credit card number of five thousand dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
And I think, Max, I have yours, yours is in my office.
Yeah.
Or did you get it?
They gave it to me.
Okay.
Uh, item R, O U B C C, insurance or non-insurance of construction permit.
And here's the previous ones, if you want to look at them. Which we, it, it's, I think it's whether or not you require a construction contractor.
Got you, right, yeah. Um, I believe we've signed this before.
Yeah, here's previous years. Yeah, here they are.
An annual deal?
Well, here's the deal.
Okay, that's the one we got, and then here was seventeen?
So I thought we already had, see, this is the one. We've already signed this. November, this is a copy. We've sent this to them, and she's faxed it to her twice. And, and what we're going to do is to acknowledge that we have sent this to them twice. This will be the third notice.
Oh, okay, okay.
Notice that we want to get them to, uh, confirm that they have received it three times now, and we're not going to approve it again.
Okay. I just assumed it had to be done every year, 'cause I'm looking and.
But we've already done it. They keep saying they don't. But we've already done it. They keep saying they don't get it.
They don't get it.
And Desi has faxed it on the twentieth.
Oh.
She, they called, she faxed it again on January twenty-second. And we just want to acknowledge in our minutes that we will fax it again, but it's time for them to stop sending us this level.
Okay.
Whatever we need to do to get them off our radar.
Gotcha, okay.
And I told Desi to put it on the agenda because this is how we're gonna get it taken care of.
Gotcha, okay.
Hopefully again.
Hopefully, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. Acknowledge that.
Okay, I move that we acknowledge that, an action, that we acknowledge that we have sent that back to them twice. This will be the third time. And that we request that they. Acknowledge it, update their files and not send us anymore.
I'll second.
Okay.
Hess, Hess moved, Ronk seconded, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Free, fair contract, yeah, that's on here, for rental of Grant County Expo Center.
On the next three agenda items, I haven't really seen.
Item T.
Okay.
Item T, I think.
S, though, I haven't gotten anything back from the DA.
No action on S, haven't got back from the DA. Item T.
Okay, after spending. Three days with Bunch County Commissioners. It confirms there are zero counties that require any sort of event insurance. Now, I don't know what you guys think and we can put this back on for next week, but we've got to get it. And I, I've, I've talked to a couple of our Fair Board members. There, there is still some concern on the little family reunions and stuff like that. I would think anything under. Under, let's, let's say seventy-five people. Th- th- and this is just me thinking here. Anything under seventy-five people. That has no alcohol whatsoever. And is in the front part of the, in the, in the.
Women's.
In the women's, the kitchen, what, whatever you want to call the front part of the, of the building. Do not require. Because, and I also talk, I didn't get to talk to Dusty, but I talked to Dale Freck, and he said, you guys are covered. He said, you're just gonna, you're gonna be out of pocket for the first twenty-five grand. And so if we, if we have the Fair Board put aside twenty-five thousand dollars anyway to cover their deductible, like we should anyhow.
Yeah, they will have to do that.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna.
Then, then, then the exposure is off the tax roll. Now, I'm thinking if, if, if it's, if it's a wedding reception. They may say that they're not gonna have alcohol, but they can't help that cousin Jim brought a, brought an ice chest. Okay, I, I think a wedding reception, a class reunion. Or anything in the back part of the building. We require, uh, event insurance with county of grant being the additional insured.
Pat, why don't you write some of that stuff down and get that to Stephen, just for his review, you know, he, he only gonna approve stuff to form anyway. He doesn't approve what's in the contract. He only approves whether it's a legal document. Why don't you write some of that stuff down and send that to him just for his review and to Cindy Pratt?
Well, I mean.
And, um, I, I think I'm, I'm willing to, to discuss that, but I want something I can look at and check it off.
Get with me and I'll type something up real quick. It wouldn't take me long. I'll just make sure I have everything.
Have that stuff written down.
But I mean, is that unreasonable?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
No.
I've thought about that a lot and, you know, we talked about the small events, the big events be covered.
Maybe fifty, I mean, I don't know, yeah, the number.
Well, I mean, you get some families in it.
Yeah, that's true. Some event, yeah, I think that we ought to try to do something to make it reasonable to, for people to use. Um, and I think if it's, uh, an organs, I mean, definitely our schools and our four Hs and FFAs, I don't. You know, they're already covered.
They're already covered anyway, yeah.
But, yeah, I think so.
But we don't want to exclude our, our, uh, women, women's group that gets together for quilting or something like that.
Or, or baking class. That's gonna be under the.
The extension.
Extension office anyway, so, um, uh, yeah, let's write some of that stuff down. I think that's probably a good thought to try to do something.
And I had, I'd also visited with some about, you know, others in Al Fafa County, they did, they don't require having anything like that and. You know, I understand the concerns with the Fair Board. We want to be sure that we're covered, but I think that we are. Uh, after what ACO has said.
Yeah, let's get something from ACO too. Have Dusty or something send us a deal on that, how that works.
Yeah. I just, you know, after talking with especially Noble and Payne County. And they keep their fairgrounds hopping all the time. And they didn't even have anything. I'm thinking, whoa, we need to quit being so rigid. Or I need to quit being so rigid.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Okay, work on that and bring that back to us. And, uh, part-time employees for Grant County, so we're still being looked at, okay. We, we, we're gonna have to get some of these stuff checked off because people are wanting to rent the building. We're gonna have to.
Put high priority on my sticky bet. I'll, I'll get with him about it, so.
And, um, deceased indigents, I didn't do any checking. Max, did you do any checking?
No, no.
High priority for us, Max.
I know, I know. No, I did not.
Not going anywhere.
But you know what? One of the deals is, is we could have a, we could have a day that we, just like we store the person and then we have a day that we. Alternate between our churches in our county and let them do a little service over the indigent. And we could make it our policy that we are going to go down to the, the monument at Jefferson and, and out back there.
Scatter their ashes.
Scatter their ashes and then, uh, name plate, put a name plate up or something like that. I think it can be simple enough like that. As long as we've got documented. Okay?
Sounds good. Okay, um. Acknowledge image scanning program, Calpro purchasing program in the clerk's office.
Just wanted you all to be aware, we are get, we did get our program ordered and Alex got her new scanner and it was an expensive scanner, but the reason being is. It has the capability of reading the document. So if, so we're going to start scanning all of the contracts and all of. Everything in and that way, then if you're looking for a particular, you can search it by the word and it'll pull up every document that has that. She started scanning in all.
Search by Grant County.
No, no, you'll have five million, three hundred and twenty-one items, but I just wanted you to be aware, we're getting ready to start trying to get as much of this into electronic format. It does raise our yearly cost at Calpro, but it's like, um, fourteen hundred dollars. But my thing too is that it not only is gonna assist us with our job, those items will now be backed up off-site at Calpro. So I think to me it's worth fourteen hundred dollars a year, just even to have it backed up off-site.
Um, and that, does that, that could probably come out of county general because those are the documents you're doing for the county. That's not just your clerk's office.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, kinda like we talked with the laptop.
Okay, okay, yes, and I did get my laptop and it's wonderful and I've been using it and, yeah, it's really good, so. Um, but yeah, we're really, the girls are working really hard and we're just trying to kind of get things up to speed there, so.
All right, do we have any road crossings?
No.
No? New business, Cindy, do we have any?
Yes, I do have new business. I've got a call right before the board meeting from.
And this is something we need to, to handle today?
Yes, uh, it's a request for a change in the receiving officers for the health department. Um, they were, they had brought this to me after the agenda posting, um, to put Melissa Tedford on there and to, to make us have two. Well, then, in, because they only had Shannon Currents and then the other person had retired. Well, then in the meantime, they got a call from Shannon this weekend. She's quit and not coming back to work, so. At present, the health department is without a receiving officer, so I.
That is an emergency. That would be fun, that, that.
I make a motion to a, approve the receiving officer and her name is.
Melissa Tedford.
Melissa Tedford.
Um, and, uh, due to the emergency situation as, as of today, they have no receiving officer. So this was an emergency.
Listen.
I second that.
Okay, um, Ron, uh, Hess moved, Ron seconded, to approve the designation of Melissa Tedford. As receiving officers for the Grant County Health Department due to the fact that, that, uh, as of, uh, eight o'clock this morning, they had no receiving officers. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Um, Max, do you have any new business?
No, I do not.
Pat, do you have?
I have none.
Uh, what, okay. All righty, um, I have no new business. Christian comments?
Uh, we've got one bridge, um, framed up and everything waiting. Uh, I've got it set up for concrete this week, uh, to get concrete delivered to that. We get material, we're working on the material for the next bridge at the shop. Uh, we got a little bit of rain, six to seven tenths of rain, an inch in some places, very nice. We sure enjoyed it. Had a good conference down at, uh, Norman, got to see several commissioners, um. Legislation seems to be going along, uh, pretty good. That's about all I had.
Okay. Pat?
We got about an inch of rain last week and we didn't get anything done on M and M Blacktop. But, uh, we're starting to rock today. Or they were working towards that when I came up here. Um, I also was down at the. Conference in Norman. Off the record, I thought their agenda was kind of lackluster. Um, I was, but I took a lot of that time that, and, uh, visited with quite a few commissioners about some of this fairground stuff. And I, I, I feel a lot better now than I did a week ago. Um, there's, there's, there's a lot of, lot of different, different angles you can look at stuff like that. Um, that's about all I've got.
Um, we, we were delighted to get the rain as well. It's, it's really been good. Um, we are starting today to do our working, uh, Billy's Hall and Rock to start today on that. I have a few guys working. This was our day, our holiday, but we do have some people that came in to, to work, so we're doing that, um. We went ahead and got the rest of our bridge material ordered and railroad yard did, um.
But you got the last of it.
Did I, yeah.
You got the very last of it.
Yeah, so they did, uh, honor that bid on that, so we've got that moving forward and I think. Uh, thank you Cindy, by the way, for getting this information here for us on what we do now that, that we're gonna have some problems and we'll keep this in our file here. And will allow us to do some phone calling around if they, if they, we have to call them obviously first and then they have to tell us and we have to just document it. And when we do do that, we have to bring that to the, put it on the agenda that we are, did, you know, the calls and that we're going to accept it.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be faxed, it, but we need one of those sheets.
Okay.
We need those sheets where the, the S A I form that says we called, you know, who we called, we have to just document that.
Okay.
So.
Well, and I did hear from, from a vendor and then from our C E D director. That they all thought it would be smart to just go out for bids.
Again, on it.
On stuff.
Again.
On, uh, yeah, on a case by case.
Case basis, okay. That, that would be an option as well. I, I mean, if you're buil- obviously, if you're building a whole bridge, I think you should, but if you're just needing a few.
No, yeah, 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 yeah.
Like I ordered this and we think we got enough, but if I come up to it and all of a sudden I'm two sheets short.
You don't want to have to go back out for bid.
We're like, I'm bidding up two bridges anyway.
Different, yeah, right. So that would be good, okay. And, um, this week I leave on Wednesday for the Naco, um, Rural Action Caucus meeting. And it is going to be in West Palm Beach, Florida. And yes, I know it has a million and a half people, but if you look at the, the county as a whole, it's. Huge agriculture. And we're gonna be doing some tours, but we're gonna be focusing on the Farmville. As you know, it expires, uh, September thirtieth. And they're in the process of, of, uh, trying to rewrite that. I talked to Congressman Lucas's, uh, field agent. He came by my shop last week and we discussed that, although he's not chair of that committee anymore, he is still a well thought of. And he does, they do hear input from him, so we'll be working on that. I leave Wednesday and return Sunday.
And that was the Naco Rural Action Caucus?
Yeah, goes by rack. So, but I will be going to that. And Jerry Donaldson's retirement party last week was, um. She had forty-five people show up. Yeah, it was a great, a great turnout. Um, she's officially retired now, so. Retired working at home, I guess. Again, we appreciate the work she did for, for our county.
Yes, and I would like to add on my comments that, uh, Steve Clover retired from district one. Uh, his final day was last week.
Okay.
And, uh, I want to thank him, uh, publicly and everything that, for his service to Grant County. We sure do, uh, appreciate his work and efforts and we're gonna miss him.
All right, um, uh, next to, tomorrow evening is the third annual, uh, Conservation District Banquet. Uh, at six o'clock here in Metro. I'll be attending that. With that, that's all I have. Brings us down to item eleven.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I second that.
Hess moved, Ron seconded, to adjourn at, uh, ten twenty-six A M. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
If you'd have told me that this was gonna be less than an hour and a half, I'd have said you're nuts.
Well, we gotta get some of that stuff.
What time, what time is it Thursday? Cindy is at nine?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
You're not coming back to what time, Cindy?
Uh, Sunday.
Sunday?
Sunday.
Do, do what again, Cindy?
Yes, it's at nine.
Nine?
Yes.